Ready to fire away? I hear that, oh yeah, thank you. Alright, we're gonna call it to order the city council meeting for Monday, July 18th, 2022. Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is the third meeting, or the second meeting of the month, third week. Usually we have a elementary or preschool student join us, but it looks like nobody was on our list for that. It's summer, so pray. Camping or doing whatever, but hopefully we get some more nominations in, because I think a lot of us here on council really enjoy that when the youth come up and are able to participate in that. If anyone is looking to do so, please contact the city manager's office. That number is 920-793-5532. Jamie, roll call.
Jeff Dahlke.
Here.
Tracy Coach is excused. Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Jason Ring.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
Onto number four, consideration of any council member requesting to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Tracy has not indicated that she would like to do so, so we will skip over number four. We have no public hearing, so we can move on from five, all the way over to number six, which is input from the public. Anyone looking to address the council on something that's on this agenda, or something you'd like to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium. My right, your left, state your name and address for the record. Alright, see no one. We'll move on to seven, which is council communications. Any council member have any communications they would like to share with the rest of the council? Yes, Jason?
I think the rest of the council was copied on an email from a constituent here, but, and they had several things to talk about, topics that we've been discussing, but one thing they brought up was when they watch from home, that if council members don't speak into the microphone, it doesn't get broadcast to the people watching at home. So I just thought it was a good opportunity to remind everyone else up here and myself as well to speak into the microphone when you're talking on council topics.
Yep, I got that one as well. Anything else, Jason?
That's all I have.
Okay, anybody else receive any communications they'd like to share?
I got one.
Okay, nope?
A person came up to me while I was at the Bets Park boat ramp, and at the, there's a stainless steel, it helped people get out of the boat, and there was, one was missing. And he said to the doc, it'd be nice if all the docs had it. And he did actually have it where the, an old guy was getting out of his boat and fell in the water.
Who?
Because... The guy didn't get hurt, but he just got a little wet, so.
I think that falls in our Parks and Rec department, does it not, Greg?
Yes, and I think, looking at Mike back here, it is duly noted, and follow-up will be happening, right away. Yep, feel free to share those with council members also, so nobody else falls in the drink. In the meantime, by all means, always feel free to reach out with an email or a phone call. Thank you, we'll be on it.
Yep, I had several of them again. I said a woman called me and she said, after listening to the last meeting, it's clear to her that the only opinions on council, or it seems that the only opinions on council, are most members of council, other opinions from other council members, or their own. She said the council members said the effect that there's enough options out there, that the elderly has access to meetings. And she also said that many older people don't know how to use today's technology. Said she talked to many of the older people, and they said they wanted it back on TV. So that was one of them, anybody have anything to weigh in on that?
No, but I know it is coming up on our agenda.
Right.
So we'll be able to speak on that.
Then another older gentleman contacted me and said, he feared that things are being swept under the rug because can't get access on TV. Just an older gentleman, basically on the same point of the other one, but I just wanted to express it. And he contacted me. And then another woman contacted me and said it's disappointing that she rarely sees council members out and about in public, talking to people and asking their opinions and what they want and what they needed. And she said even at some of the local events that had been going on, that there were several that she hadn't seen anybody out there, rarely, go and talk to anybody.
I just would note, they'd have seen six of them over the course of the day at the Brian Lee event, because there were six council members volunteering, selling brats, burgers, beer stand.
Right.
With a lot of interaction.
This is prior to that one, though.
Okay, yeah, I know all of you, not for me to argue, but all of you are involved in a lot of community. Just as an observation, some of you choose to highlight it, some of you don't, a lot of you are involved.
Another one about televising, an older gentleman contacted me and said he was upset because, as I had stated in the last meeting, that the city's willing to spend in excess of $100,000 for the pickleball court, but it's less than a quarter of that to televise everything. So that was another concern from an elderly gentleman that had on that note. And, let's see, another gentleman contacted me about putting the red concrete back in, where we're taking it back out, and in the crosswalks. And he said it never should have been there.
By city council, yep.
Right, he said it never should have been there in the first place, and I explained to him that it was a state issue at the time. You know, the city may have wanted it, but it's not going back in with the stamped concrete, so that the plow can take it off, but I did express that to him.
And, yeah, hopefully refer him over to Jefferson Street, where we did flat colored concrete as an experiment before Washington.
Right, and that's what I said, I said some of the other streets in town, we got away from that, and it's working out much better.
Lesson learned, lesson learned.
And one, my last one, a woman stopped me in the grocery store and said it's very disturbing to her that she hears a lot of council members saying, "I think and I want", and not really saying, you know, what the public wants. And she feels it's just a slap in the face to the people who voted for them.
Yeah, very good. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay.
That was enough.
It was, just wanted to make sure we didn't cut you off. Anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Be none, I did get a couple of them, one that just wanted to be highlighted, and that was the pickleball courts, which I think Greg is gonna update us on, probably in the city manager's report, or maybe even right now, I'm not sure.
You know, actually, I was just gonna ad lib during the city manager's report, so I would share that, less than two weeks ago, our Parks and Rec director, Scott All, our civil engineer, and Jared Rohr, our maintenance foreman for parks, got together, went over some recommended changes in the spec that we've gotten, in all honesty, a couple months ago, from Northeast Asphalt, which was the one bidder we had when the project budgeted at $150,000, came in at $285,000. We're meeting again Wednesday afternoon this week to identify a timeline and get the project rebid. Some of the changes there, just FYI, were not doing nearly as extensive fence replacements, saw cutting the existing asphalt inbound of the perimeter fence and doing the removals there, so still gotta take some out so you can get a paving machine in. But that made things simpler, using a standard asphalt mix rather than a specific recycled mix that the court consultant had specified, because I think we heard the closest plant that produces that is a couple hours away. That added considerably to the cost. We're also looking at using some of our city crews, which we won't bury that cost, so if anybody thinks we're hiding things, we're not gonna bury the cost, but we think we can do it more economically there. And in all honesty, when we, when we bid it out, we've gotta finalize this, we may very well bid separately the final paint marking, because it needs a season to cure first, and we'll just have temporary striping on black asphalt. So why be prepaying through a general who's gonna sub it out anyway, versus contracting on our own? Even with that, honestly, folks, it doesn't look, we're hoping, but we're not sure, it doesn't look like it'll come in under $150,000, but I think it'll be a whole lot closer to budget to where we could at least look at the TIF district that is funding that and see if it's feasible. If we're lucky, maybe it does come in below. But we shouldn't expect it to be at $285,000, which is where the one bid came in back in February. So sorry for the delay there, but we've been short-staffed, and we are moving on it. So I'd like to assure the people that enjoy pickleball, and that's certainly a growing sport. You still hear it from cities all over the place, the demand for pickleball courts and play is out there.
Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Yep.
Anything else from anyone, before we close this? Alright, that brings us to number eight, which is council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything they'd like to report on from their boards, commissions, or committees? Alright, city manager's report, Greg?
Okay, we don't have any specific invited guests tonight, so I'll bore right into my report, keep it short. First off, I would extend kudos to the Main Street organization, notably the Design Committee that is in charge of downtown planters, along with Dominance Floral, who grows some incredible plants, and Green Acres, who is doing the maintenance on the downtown planters. They are amazing. I'm sure you've all taken note of them if you drive up and down the street. Lots of positive comments, and those pots don't even look really big anymore, which is kind of amazing, because they looked mighty big when there were scrawny little flowers in them. So, congrats to Main Street. On the personnel end of things, we continue to recruit for a new Public Works Director and City Engineer. Mr. McDonald, of course, announced his plans to retire in late September of this year. Community Service Officer interviews are being conducted this week for a full-time community service officer that would take the place of two part-time positions we have right now. Hopefully, get somebody in, have some longevity in that position, and address some of the code enforcement issues that really need doing around the community. We're just about always advertising for Parks and Rec building attendance. That's a nice entry-level job for students, maybe first work experience. Not that we, not that we limit it to students. And I would note that we have now successfully filled both of those seasonal positions in the DPW. They're full, and I expect they're still, still full as of today. So that's the status on some of those vacancies that we've been talking about. Seventeenth Street Reconstruction Project, not a whole lot new to say. The schedule does still call for water service to be set up this week, the temporary water service. And the contractor, we still expect in late July, will be starting, tearing things up over there. And Jim, I talked to Scott All this afternoon, that was the last he had heard, and that was from late last week. No late breaking news? I hear we're saying this week, so. Related to that, honestly, I think it's, I'm just throwing this out there, due to the late start for Seventeenth Street, which at its eastern terminus does tie into Zlatnik, I think there's a pretty high probability we'll be deferring that Zlatnik paving to next season. That may not be the worst, oil seems to be easing off just a little bit. We did already borrow the money and locked in a better rate than we certainly could get today, or I dare say next year. So, we can stay on top of that, but we really don't wanna be tackling Zlatnik until Seventeenth is done and ties into it. Sort of related to it, the pre-construction meeting with the contractor for the various scattered site lead-water service lateral replacements, of which there are 50 total, is this week Wednesday, and then they'll be starting in earnest. So far, they've just, they've helped us out with two emergency replacements where there were leaks. But, and this is a contractor, this is the first time we've dealt with them. We'll, we'll stay on top of that, but we do have 50 under contract. Dave Bus has also been in touch with the county finance office about processing of invoices for the county's share on our, on their assistance through county ARPA dollars, which we very much appreciate.
As long as you're on that, can you reiterate what we did last year with that? Because that was another thing that got asked of me, is what we're doing to get these lead-service laterals replaced. And we did talk about the money received from the American Rescue Plan. How are we moving forward with that over the next couple of years? Can you just send out a reminder, just real quick?
Sure, you know, I guess I would note, I don't recall the stats right off the top of my head, but we've done, over the last four years, five years, better than 500 total service replacements, both scattered and as part of street reconstruction projects. And the city's been able to borrow funds through the Safe Drinking Water Fund for the public portion from the shut-off valve out to the main, at below interest rate, generally, I think on all of those projects, with 30% principal forgiveness, which effectively is a grant. We've been able to secure grants of $2,500 per homeowner, and we're continuing with that level of assistance this year. We hope we'll be able to continue that on. So we're, we're making progress on it, and that's how we hope to proceed over the next three to four years with spending our ARPA dollars, as well as the county match. I guess I'd just reiterate one of the concerns I've still got, as we're seeing the federal infrastructure dollars coming in, and the stimulus or ARPA dollars, it's a lot of dollars chasing limited contractor capacity and manufacturing capacity, especially with Build America, which we all wanna see, to make sure the valves, the pipes, and everything are available to do all this work. Because we've, you know, we've not done a very good job in recent decades on reinvesting in our infrastructure, and we're seeing some of the effects of trying to go from zero to 60 in a very short time. So, I'd be happy to put a more detailed report on that agenda, because honestly, our engineering staff and water department staff have done an outstanding job of reaching out and accessing funding that's available to the benefit of the utility and the individual property owners. Yeah.
Thank you.
Important stuff, we've got a lot of it to do, as you know, like a lot of older cities, but it's good timing for us, thank you. Central Park West 365, the latest donation, we're happy to announce, is from Brad and Lisa Bosar, the owners of Napa Auto Parts in Two Rivers and Algoma. They have pledged $15,000, part of it this year, and then two installments over the next two years, but a $15,000 donation from Napa. Total donations and pledges to date total just over $630,000. At 640, we'll be at 80% of the fundraising goal of $800,000. There's a new round of asks, both letters and some phone calls, going out this week with the goal of getting our fundraising over the top. And we're gonna need to talk, probably starting at the work session next week, about at least getting this project bid out, so we know where we stand, and we have some pricing back in. Because that, even if we're at 100% of our fundraising right now, and there was a 10% contingency built into the original budget, like every project the city is doing lately, or anybody else, the question is where the bid's gonna come in, what is it gonna look like? How do we proceed? Great support, though, from this downtown business. And I do wanna get a plug in here as well, for our city staff and Project 365 committee members, who staffed a burger and brat sale stand, and also took donations and raffled off a gift basket at Brian Lee Day, and netted a little over $1,300 for the project, so. And there you see some of the intrepid crew from customer service, building maintenance, economic development, and our city clerk, along with her daughter. And out of the photo, her son and her husband. And you didn't see the community development director's husband, because he was manning the grill in the back, and we didn't want the burgers to burn. I know, also, we had members of the committee, including council member Steckmesser, that helped out that day. I'll do the kudos for Brian Lee Day later on, but that was an amazing day, and it was nice to see, again, committee members and a lot of your city staff, our city staff out there, participating in the fundraising. Just some of the highlights, again, on major fundraising. We are, we are working with the Schmidt Brothers to facilitate online contributions for the pavilion, but they're, they're getting the word out through their family channels and the barbershop or community. And there we have, again, some of the major donations. There is a corporate donation, a new one of 20, excuse me, of $30,000 that I'm counting when I say we're at 630, but I want a representative of that donor to be here, hopefully for the next meeting, to make that public. But that's another new one that... There are still naming opportunities with seating wall plaques, at $10,000 or $15,000, and bricks. Lots of opportunities with pavers, and if Spirit of the Rivers and other projects are any indication, those will be selling after the project is done. People like those opportunities for recognition with pavers or with benches, except benches, benches are all spoken for, as are, at this point, all the ornamental light poles, picnic tables, et cetera. One operational question that Jeff Dahlke had raised at past council meetings was an estimate of the cost of water for the planned water feature. The best estimate from our designer is at max, assuming you've got a hot, busy summer day. Then it could be as high as 40,000 gallons of water, and under the city's current rate structure, that's about $195, rounded up just about $200. That's a big number, that's, but also, every, everything the city does is a big number. That's probably two and a half hours of police patrol time with a car, or it's maybe four hours of DPW personnel with a vehicle. I would point out, if it, if it's a hot day and we're going through that many gallons, it means there's a lot of people that are enjoying it, because the water feature will have an easy button, I hope that's not a copyrighted term, but an easy button, so users, if, if you show up with your kids or grandkids and wanna use the water feature, you won't just find it splashing away and activated. There'll be the need to, to hit a button to activate it. There will also be the ability to operate on a time cycle during the evening hours, because plans are for some colored lighting, as shown in the illustration there, to be worked into it. And, but that could just be every half hour for five minutes or something, and it's off. So that will be, that will be an operating expense. Honestly, in thinking about it a little, that may be yet another opportunity. You know, you see people that, as memorials, light the lighthouse at Rogers Street, be a nice little business advertising opportunity to say, "Water for the splash pad feature this week brought to you by..." I can't guarantee that'll happen, but those would be things to think about.
Is that 200 dollars per day?
Per day.
On a hot day?
Yep, now, if it, if it rains and it's chilly, zero. But, and remember, from a design standpoint, this is more than what you'd ask, but from a regulatory standpoint, you wanna stay under 50,000 gallons per day, because the state has some regs that kick in, then you have to recirculate water, and then you're in the pool business, and you're adding chemicals, you're filtering, and that would have a lot, which is great if you already have a pool and you add a splash pad. But separately... But separately, stay under, you want to stay under 50,000. Yeah, that's, that's a real number for a day that 40,000 gallons would be used. I dare say that would probably be a few dozen people enjoying it over the course of the day, too.
And that's assuming that thing would be running nonstop all day long, which even on a hot day, I can't see that happen. I mean, you'd have to sit there and keep hitting the buttons. It's almost like working with like a, a hot tub when you go to a hotel. You gotta go there and you gotta, you gotta turn the jets on. And then it shuts off after 10, 15 minutes and then you gotta go back, you gotta turn it back on. So it's not going to be something that's just going to be splashing away as, as, you know, city taxpayers, their, the meter just keeps clicking away. It's going to be somebody using it, somebody enjoying it, whether it's one of our community members, whether it's a tourist, anything like that. I think it's going to be a good benefit.
That's, if you will, that's a worst case scenario.
Right.
And it's also a best case scenario because it means there's, there's people there all day using it. So that's, that's the best I can furnish at this point.
I'll pass it on whoever.
Yep.
Message me both then.
Yep. Tell them we're not, we're not hiding it, sharing it. Again, just a reminder, the word has gotten out just about, I think through a whole, I don't know if there's one more utility bill cycle to go out on this, but we're pretty close to wrapping up notifying all households, all, all utility customers in the city of the City Council Public Hearing on ATV and UTV Use on City Streets. And that, of course, being at the regular council meeting on August 15. We are at, people can certainly come to that public hearing and give direct input. We've been asking people that want to provide written comments in lieu of coming to the meeting or just in ahead of coming to the meeting to submit them to the city clerk, as indicated in the little notice here. And Jamie has been at least weekly forwarding those to the council. Thank her for that. So that's that. Second Annual Brian Lee Memorial Blues Festival was a week ago, last Saturday. What was that, the 69th, 9th of July? It was amazing. And I'll defer to the event chair from Main Street, our council member Darla Leclair. But first of all, kudos to Darla, who stepped in. Main Street's got a vacancy in the director position, which she may want to speak to as well, which has been filled, although I don't know that we've done a press release on that yet. But, and it, it was amazing. The people that were there had a great time. Many of them were not from Two Rivers and brought a lot of people into town. I've heard from businesses that they were really slammed that day. And very subjective statement on my part, but I think it was a huge image builder for the community. It's just a class event with, you know, eight hours, eight solid hours of grand entertainment. Darla, over to you, please.
Like Greg said, this was the second annual, and we're, we're using the word annual now because last year was such a success, we just, I, which I, a lot of us thought was just going to be a one-off. It was so successful, we decided to just keep going with it. And don't fix it if it ain't broke, we're sticking with blues because a lot of people love blues. And we really don't have anything in the area that would fill that, that void. And we, it's so hard to estimate how many people were there because we don't sell tickets, so you can't count up the, you know, number of people who, who purchased. But at one time, I, it was busy all day. The place was basically filled all day long. But at one point, there were so many people that the north end of the park was full. The south side of the bandstand was completely full with people behind the Christmas tree and then going down towards the community house and then out to Seventeenth. And people across the street in East Central Park. We're thinking we might have tapped out at 2,200 people. So it was, and we had, we were prepared this year. Our, our beer tent was not as frantic as last year. So we had plenty of that. We had food vendors. We had so many volunteers. And it was, it was a lot of work, but it was definitely worth it. And I'm already, we're already talking about what's going on for next year. And we're going to be sitting down and talking about that tomorrow. One thing that I, I'm going to be talking to Greg and with Mike, our new Parks and Rec Director, is what I'm going to talk to them about, too, is the possibility of doing a two-day, which wouldn't be out in the park, but it would allow people in the community to see the performers in an informal setting at various venues throughout the, yeah. Sorry, I scared you of that.
I like that.
But that would give, and then also to have these performers, which, by the way, we had Grammy Award winners. So these guys are no slouches. And of course, we had, we had some female, you know, female performers in there, too. But these are, these are class A performers who, a lot of them performed all over the world. A lot of them came in from out of state, so it's as important to them as it is to us. So, yeah, we'll keep you up to date as to what's going to happen next year. And I, I ask that people put it on their calendar now, you know, for next year. So, and we look forward to seeing you. And I'm, I'm, I'm really stoked about doing this again. And I'm very proud of being able to do this for the city.
It was a huge success. And I, I ran into several of the sponsors over the course of the day and they were happy. The people, it so generously wrote the checks that paid for the acts so they could be offered free to the community and our visitors. And sponsors are happy, everyone's happy. And not to give away state secrets, but when your, when your beer sales get in into just over five digits, that's, yes, five digits, that, with a comma, that's good news, too. So a little over $10,000 on, on the beverage sales, just at the 110. So, yeah, cool. Two Rivers has got a reputation for great events and this only adds to it. Over at the Senior Center, the drive-up window facility funded entirely with the CDBG, sorry, CDBF, CDBG COVID dollars, that's proceeding well. The drive-through window is now through the wall. I don't know if the, the access door also is being added. That will give people that are picking up Meals on Wheels for home delivery the opportunity to pull up underneath a canopy that will go over both that pass door and the drive-up window, so they have a little shelter and aren't fighting traffic in and out the main entrance of the Senior Center. We've been, as far as I know, very happy with the contractor. Everything's going along well there. There will be one additional public input opportunity. The CDBG required a public hearing, you might remember, at the front end before the project was started. And there will be another one. Elizabeth, is that first meeting in August, first or second? September. That's right. We didn't really want to add it on to the ATV, UTV discussion night. So it'll be the first meeting in September for sort of a wrap-up and review of the project and how those federal dollars were used. Upcoming events, Two Rivers Community Band this Thursday night, concert in Central Park. Snow Fest this coming weekend at Neshota Park, great musical lineup, craft beers, refreshments. The parade on Columbus Street, I believe you have a handout in front of you as far as the gathering for the parade. The Snow Fest Committee encourages folks to be there between 9:30 and 10:30 for the lineup for an 11 o'clock parade. We will have at least two city pickup trucks with signage that says City Council. Council members, Lisa will do a check later this week on who else is coming, but you can feel free to either ride in the cab, in the pickup trucks, nobody in the back end, or walk, as, as some did last year. But again, the parade drought is on Columbus and the gathering area is at the former Shoreline Credit Union parking lot and at Allstate's Rigging across the way. The city council is unit number 12. And I've been assured you're not behind horses. So two good things. Number 12, fairly early in the parade. So we wish, we wish Snow Fest well on the second annual of the reborn Snow Fest. Concert in Central Park, the Del Ray's later on this month, next week, Thursday, the 28th. Family Fun Night at Washington Park next week, Tuesday. Parks and Rec Department Relay for Life of Manitowoc County comes back downtown to Central Park on Friday, July 29th with various activities and the Luminaria Walk and all of that from 5 to 10:30 PM. And then the next bands on the beach after we get past some major activities like Snow Fest that are upcoming. Spicy Thai Band at the Rotary Pavilion, Sunday, July 31. I heard from somebody today that saw and heard Spicy Thai Band over in the Madison area a couple of weeks ago, said they're absolutely fantastic. Came, our former council member Vince Alber, who was vacationing back in Two Rivers and said, they're great. He highly recommends this WAMI award-winning rock band. Rescheduled fireworks, the Parks and Rec Department, consistent with council direction at the last regular meeting, have things rescheduled with various concession operators, the community band, the Clipper City Chordsmen, and Spielberg Fireworks for September 10th, which, when staff thought about it a little bit, a nice opportunity to tie in with the commemoration, the 21-year anniversary, the, the next day of the 9/11 attacks. So one of, one of those times when all of us Americans were standing on the same side and feeling unified. So not, not a bad thing to hearken back to, at least as far as that, that resolve. And so please mark your calendars for a patriotic end of summer celebration over at Waldfield on September 10. Was Jeff mentioned earlier and just would mention, the DPW crews are replacing those stamped colored crosswalks at Washington and Seventeenth with new flat surface colored concrete. And this is something, at least per our discussions last year at budget time, we want to replace all of those stamped, those damnable stamped crosswalks up and down Washington Street on a phased basis. So doing that with our crews, but that is a capital budget item. Reminder about the Snow Fest Parade again, I think if you're over there by 10:30, you're good. Just look for the big yellow vehicles and say Two Rivers City Council. And that is my report tonight with a nod toward the 53 volunteer-tended gardens on Mariners Trail that people are enjoying right now. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, brings us to number 10, which is the consent agenda. Under A, we have a presentation of minutes, the city council meeting for July 5th, 2022. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are four. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, department reports for June 2022, there are 10. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under D, applications and petitions. We have an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license from Softball Central for Crazy From the Heat 7 Girls Fastpitch Tournament at Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park, 1235th Street for July 28th through the 31st, 2022. The recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. Under E, we have a noise ordinance waiver request from Relay for Life on Friday, July 29th until 11:00 PM, waiving the provisions of Sections 9-2-5B to B regarding noise audible within an enclosed structure used for residential purposes and Section 9-2-5D pertaining to vibration. The recommended action is a motion to approve the request that has submitted. Under F, schedule a public hearing for August 1st, 2022 for the request to change the zoning for a 26-square-foot area of property at 1723 East Street from B1 Business District to R3 Single and Double Family Residence District. The recommended action is a motion to schedule public hearing on August 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM. The recommended action for the consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Take that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Scott, thank you. Any discussion? Your mic's off.
You have.
There you go. It's on now.
It's on now. Did those little kids have to do mouth-to-mouth resuscitation on the giant teddy bear? When they, I'm, I'm assuming it's the fire station that put that one on. Page 26.
Somebody read the report.
No, I like to read them because, because it's very interesting.
The giant teddy bear known as our fire chief will come up and answer that question for you. The teddy bear is fuzzier.
This is true. Fuzzy wuzzy was a bear. So what councilmember Shimalunis is referring to is we do firefighter for the day. Usually we have a coloring contest where we, we then have four students, two, two on one day, two on another. And we basically put them through the paces of becoming a firefighter or paramedic. So we have them do an extrication, we get a car, we have them cut it apart. We actually have them go on a, on an EMS call where we, a bicyclist, the teddy bear, which is about their size, gets hit by a vehicle and then they actually take it, treat the bear, load it up in the back of the ambulance, and then physically take it to the hospital where they then trade it off. And so it's like a whole little big thing and they have a lunch with the guys. And it's, it's a great community pub kind of event that we run and we get a lot of positive feedback, gets us out in the community. So it's, and no, they didn't. They didn't have to do CPR. The bear, bear made it in a, in a good case, so it was good.
Is that just one student, chief? Is that just one person that participates in that or is there multiple?
Four.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other council discussion on this? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. On to 11, City Council Unfinished Business. We have one. A, ordinance to repeal and recreate Title V, Chapter 2, Section 5, entitled Amount of Sewer Service Charge of the Municipal Code, increasing the fixed charge and additional unit charge each by $2 per month. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. And we'll send that one to Greg.
Yeah, I was going, excuse me, I was going to refer you to the minutes of the Utilities Committee, which are at page 13 of your packet. And I'll defer to committee members and the chair on that as well. But you recall the initial recommendation that had come to council was to increase by $2 the fixed fee that all of us pay, as, you know, business or single-family homeowners, and to increase by a like, that, that, by $2, from $15 to $17. And then to increase by a like percentage, the additional unit charge, which is for additional residential units after the first one. And that's presently at $9. The recommendation there was to take it to $10.20. The question had come up at the last council meeting about what, how, how much would the, the base charge, that first charge, need to go up if the additional unit charge was made equal to the initial charge? Is that tracking right? If, if it was the same charge for that initial unit and each additional unit. Then there was a third option that was discussed and recommended by the committee. If you refer to the minutes, which start on page 13, and there's a chart or table on top of page 14 in your packets, you see that option one, which was, excuse me, option one, raising the monthly fee from $15. Basically, answering the question that came up last week. If the residential base fee and additional unit fee were identical, it would take a rate of $16.15 to, to raise, what, $2 and $1.20 raised? So that's that alternative. The option two was what I just, I'm sorry, what I just got done describing, the original lift of $2 on the base fee and a buck 20 on the additional fee. You'll see those, those are within $1,100 of each other, so essentially the same. And then option three, which is what was recommended out of committee, was to in fact still go with the $2 increase on the residential base fee, but also take the additional unit fee up by $2. So maybe starting to move the additional unit fee toward where the base fee is, but not doing it in one fell swoop. Each of those generate essentially the same amount of dollars from revenue that comes from fixed charges, which bear in mind, total revenue for the sewer utility is about $2.8 million annually. So this is about 1.15. You do see that this third variation recommended by the committee does in net generate about $7,000 additional on an annual basis. So that's, that's my explanation. Again, I'll defer to the committee. We need a rate increase. We need a rate increase, A, because we've deferred rate increases for two years after the Utilities Committee at least had, had accepted the concept that with capital investment and borrowing for improvements at the wastewater plan. and borrowing for improvements at the wastewater plant, we needed to be doing at least four years in a row of roughly four percent increases. Added to that, and I'm here to tell you, we may have to be confronting this again next year, added to that are the inflationary pressures we're seeing now on chemical costs and other operating costs. This is largely driven, though, by capital investment and paying off that capital investment. So, that, the ordinance amendment that's in front of you is consistent with the committee recommendation, but obviously if council wishes to act differently, it wouldn't take a whole lot to change the ordinance to go to either of the other two variations. So, I'll, again, over to the committee on that.
Okay, we deliberated on this for a very long time. I mean, we've been talking about this for several weeks now, and we looked at all options from every possible point of view that we could. And based on the fact that it costs money, you know, it costs money to get the wastewater treatment plant up and running, things wear out, you have to replace them, we provide a service to the city that I think, I think all of us would agree is critical. And sometimes, you know, and like, right now, in this day and age, in this, in this environment, where everything is so volatile as far as, you know, like getting parts, that's one thing, you don't know what's going to be available to do a job. And number two, just the cost of, for instance, chemicals that are required to be, to be used. And from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, the overall increase was twenty-six percent, and that's nothing to sneeze at. And that is something that we need to purchase, and that's the price, and, you know, we have to go with it. And there's other things too. You know, one of the things that Greg had said, as far as the cost from fixed assets such as the plant improvements, and also sewer main reconstruction, things wear out. We have to keep on top of this, and like Greg said, we have not had an increase for two years. So we're really, we're trying to play catch-up, you know, and we will discuss in the near future, various options for how we can approach, you know, taking care of this cost. We're going to be looking at a future study on how to provide a better way of sewer utility billing distribution. So that is definitely coming, but right now, our focus is to get in line with our, you know, our expenses. And, I don't know, either Jason or Tim, go ahead and go ahead and fill it in.
As for why the initial charge and the secondary charge were different, we had found out when planning for utilities and stuff, that is, two single-family houses usually are, they use more utilities than a two-family home, and that's where a lot of, that additional units are, they're not actually big apartment complexes. We have a lot of older two-family homes in Two Rivers, and there's only one pipe going in, and typically they figured sixty percent extra for a two-family home instead of the same as two single families, if that, if you understand what. So they plan it for infrastructure anyways, because that's what they know as the percentages and how it works. That's why that was not, they both weren't the same cost.
Jason?
I don't have too much to add there, other than what you guys have said.
I think our opinions were really expressed, I think, what was it, at the last city council meeting, and we really went in depth on that. So we don't want to keep repeating ourselves. Just know that the Public Utilities Committee has worked on this, and we've debated, and we've come up with the best solution that we can recommend, and I hope that everybody on city council and everybody in the community understands this and knows that we, there's no getting away from having to increase rates. We have these expenses that we have to take care of. So, Option three was what we came up with.
All right, looking for a motion on this. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bonnie. Obviously, I don't like any rate increases, and I know I keep being told that it has to happen, but it'd be nice if something else came down when something else has to go up. We got some healthy utilities. I hear from a lot of constituents that we have some pretty high utility bills, when it's all said and done between rates and between the extra fees that we put on the utility bills. And it's a common theme that I hear time and time again, and this is one of those extra fees, and I understand that costs go up. I also understand we live in a community that has a lot of poverty, and they're also seeing costs go up in their everyday lives, and Social Security's not matching that for them, and I do get a lot of people that do complain about the expense of the utility bill. It would have been nice to see something come down, especially the pond, that is, or the pond, I forget which one that is.
Stormwater.
Stormwater utility.
Yep.
That is sitting pretty healthy at the time. It'd be nice to see that come down when something else goes up. That's my take on it.
I was going to say, Greg, could you, could you explain why, and I appreciate your, you know, your ideas, there is one little drawback, you want to explain what that is, if we go from the, like, the stormwater charge?
Oh, I, you know, again, I had identified that might be an option to look at myself, but the fact is, when the stormwater utility was created, one of the early goals was to build a fund balance. The goal was about a million dollars, and we're about there now. So any future borrowing, there'd be no question, could be what's called revenue borrowing, pledging revenues of the utility rather than general obligation borrowing of the city where council makes an unlimited tax pledge. So that utility is strong, but it is about the balance that should be needed if we are going to do future revenue borrowing. I think that's the discussion you were referencing.
And I just wanted to say, too, that we're in the midst of the D N R coming up with a new TMDL for our area. We're trying to learn as much as possible in the Environmental Advisory Board, and we're looking at ways to get around it so we don't have to have all these big payouts, you know, for some of these projects. However, it is in the hands of the D N R, and if they, if their TMDL shows that we are in bad shape, we're going to have to deal with it. I don't think that that's going to be the case, but we have to be prepared. I would, I would be hesitant to touch this, to touch this account right now, perhaps in the future, but that TMDL is going to be out there fairly soon, I think within just the next couple of months. Once we've seen that, then we can kind of get an idea as to how we might be able to massage all these, you know, funds. But right now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch that phone with a ten-foot pole until we know what our duties are going to be.
Anybody else?
By the way, TMDL is Total Maximum Daily Loading for the East and West Twin Rivers. What's the maximum nutrient load, notably phosphorus, if I understand it right, discharges which the waterway can sustain and still support aquatic life? And that's, that's the magic, the studies that are being done for every major watershed in the state, and they've just recently gotten down to the study of the East and West Twin. I know the Environmental Advisory Board dedicated their last meeting to a discussion of that. I think that's available, too. Do we record that meeting?
Those are, yeah, they're recorded.
Yeah, that's pretty informative stuff. Just.
I was just going to say, I think personally that Two Rivers is definitely doing their part to make sure that our environment is healthy, and the thing is, and I think everybody, I will be preaching to the choir on this one, we have no control over what comes down into the city from upstream. The rules are different for farms than it is for municipalities. So one thing we're looking at is how much, how bad are we? What are we putting into, into the rivers and which go into the lake? You know, and what, how much is coming down that is beyond our control? So we're going to, we're going to be working with, trying to find how, how we can work with farmers, because this is a big, big issue for them too, and it's expensive to, like, retrofit a lot of, you know, equipment and just their whole operation. But how can we work with them to maybe make an improvement? It's going to take a while for us to do that, but other communities are looking at that as well. It just isn't fair that we're going to get, you know, a slap on the wrist for something that's beyond our control, but we're looking into that, and we're also looking at alternative ways to improve our environment that are not going to be costly, like a stormwater pond would be. We're trying to get away from that as much as possible. So just know that we're doing, you know, due diligence, and you've got some people on the board who are very passionate about this and giving a lot of their time and effort. So, but the thing is, this is all going to be, it's on the shoulders of the D N R, and I could talk for hours about that, but I won't, so.
Anybody else? Jeff?
I'm with you on that, Adam. I don't think that we should be rating anything, and we can drop something, especially if the fund is there in that stormwater. But I, being on the Environmental Advisory Board last year, we are way ahead of the curve, so I think we could go somewhere with that.
In a couple of months, we may not be ahead of the curve. That's what I am saying.
Press that ball when it gets there.
So in the meantime, I mean, you know, how do you, you want to take it from stormwater, all right, which at this point would not be a good, a good idea in the future, it might be a horrible idea. Where else do you think we could finance this from? What are some other options that we could look at?
Fund.
Okay.
Finance what? For?
If we take money from point A to put into point B, point B being wastewater. If we, okay. I would like to hear alternatives.
You got general obligation borrowing as well, that we can fund that stuff through. You still have, the stormwater's still sitting pretty healthy, and we have not implemented any strategic street sweeping measures that we can do to bring our load down as well and our numbers down, including parking restrictions on certain days that you could do, when we had the, I forget the gentleman's name, but he was here last year.
Nick Vanderhayne from McMahon?
Yeah, who showed us in the study that street sweeping on a weekly basis with getting the cars off the streets brought the total load down by quite a bit. I don't remember the exact number, but it brought it down by quite a bit, which could actually, I think it almost eliminated a pond, one of our smaller ponds that we had on the sheet for recommend, I think you had like ten ponds on there, and it had all the numbers as to how many parts per million or whatever that the ponds absorbed that the street sweeping could also take care of. I get it, I know you get, we need a rate increase because prices go up, but I'm also hesitant to do that on people that are struggling right now.
I know, I don't want to see these rates go up either, but.
And I'm not saying you guys didn't do your due diligence, because you did. Spent many of meetings, spent a lot of time, and I thank the Public Utilities Committee for doing that, but I guess I just don't want to see it go up.
You know, we have an Environmental Advisory Board meeting tomorrow night, and I know it's not on our agenda. Quite honestly, I forgot about the street sweeping. I did with the alternate parking. We'll definitely start talking about that again, and we'll see how it fits into the equation, but I totally forgot about that.
And do understand, there's an operating cost attendant to a stepped-up street sweeping program, too, and probably a capital cost, because all we have now is a mechanical sweeper. And if you really want to get into removal of the fines and the reduced suspended solids, you get into a vacuum sweeper. So it's more capital cost and it's staff hours, not, not to dispute, you shouldn't look at it, but it may not carry as big a capital cost as a stormwater pond. Frankly, it might be more effective than a stormwater pond, but it's not free. It still carries a cost.
I mean, right now, we street sweep, we just don't have a parking ban, even adding a parking ban to the current street sweeping that we do could be effective because it doesn't have to go around each individual car, because I know he talked about that as well. Jason, you had a comment?
Um, yeah, I, so as I'm learning things here on council, I see that we borrow for a lot of things, and a few of our programs in the city have a fund built up that keeps us from having to borrow if we need infrastructure or we need improvement somewhere. So I really hate to take away from a program that is able to fund itself without having to borrow, or has the program in place that you can borrow against the dollars that it already has. So that's, that's my only concern against, against going against this one, because I see other areas, particularly in some of our other utilities, that, again, a lot of what we pay in our rates is from that borrowing. So part of the reason our rates are where they're at is because we have so much loans on infrastructure out there. So if we could, you know, find a way to manage that so that we're not taking out so many loans, that maybe we have a program where we can pay for things as we need them or pay for them as they need to be replaced, I would really love to move to a program like that with our other utilities. So I see that program already in place here, and I would hate to interrupt that. So that's, that's my biggest issue with it, is that I see this, the wastewater, or not wastewater, the stormwater well-managed with those dollars, and I don't want to see it disrupted or turned into the way we go with some of the others.
Anybody else?
You know, we get these fees for this, fees for that, let's be real, it's not a fee, it's a tax. It is a tax, plain and simple, right? There's no other way to put it. It is a tax.
It's a fee.
It's a tax.
Well, if they pay fees, they don't have to pay taxes.
It is still a tax, Tim. If you have to pay something, and we call it a fee, in essence, it's still a tax, because the general public has to pay it. It's a tax. So, again, so we're adding two dollars to tax, is what we're doing. Right? But it is still a tax.
That's a big difference there.
Not to preach at the council, but just would remind you as well, this isn't just about the city taking money out of the rate payer's pockets for some undetermined thing. It's the nine of you who got elected, in addition to listening to the public, to be stewards of the, of the assets and the resources that this community's paid for over generations, and to maintain that infrastructure long-term. So it's, none of us like setting more money aside for anything, but it's to pay for infrastructure that same public owns. Now, right now, people might have a preference, I'd rather have, you know, two bucks more a month in my pocket for when I go to the grocery store, I get that, than have it go on my sewer bill. But the fact is, it's to maintain infrastructure and keep it upgraded and keep us out of hot water from a regulatory standpoint with D N R, and to be good stewards of this lake that we live on, and we put such a high value in, and that's part of your role as well. And I don't know that you're going to win any popularity contests for it, but you also get elected to apply your good judgment and the hours that you put in studying these things. So I think this one has been pretty well-vetted and looked at from a bunch of different directions. Staff's recommendation certainly is to proceed with an increase of the dollar magnitude presented, whether it's a buck fifteen across the border, whether it's what is recommended here at two dollars for each category. We've kicked it down the road for a while, it requires action.
Anybody else? See, none? Oh, go ahead, Bonnie, your mic's off again.
Stormwater fund is different from wastewater and different from this or that, so I hope people aren't getting the idea on the council that you can go into the stormwater fund and spend it on different things, other than stormwater related.
No, we're looking to reduce the stormwater by two dollars while this one goes up two dollars, and we're not taking it to spend anything, we would just be essentially reducing your monthly bill on the stormwater by what we're increasing this one.
Like everybody's bill?
Right.
Because some bills are very, very high. They are thousands of dollars.
It doesn't work out dollar for dollar, because on stormwater, you've got a lot of big institutional payers, the school district, the people that own, God bless them, that own Paragon now and have got all that roof and all that parking lot. So I'm winging it, I don't recall exactly, but if you, you know, for every buck, you could reduce the monthly fee applicable to homeowners, you might get fifty cents back. Uh, you might get fifty cents back uh. That would be, that you could use to offset the, does that make sense? There, it is, it's not dollar for dollar.
Right, so you have to play with the formula some sort of?
Exactly.
Hey, anybody else?
We will be talking about this again at budget time for next year, so it, I I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news. This isn't going away.
All right, Jamie, roll call vote.
Jeff Talke?
No.
Bill Leclair?
No.
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Jason Ring?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
No.
Motion carries five to three.
All right, thank you, guys, for the discussion on that. Thank you to the utilities community for a lot of time devoted to it, so. Good work. On to twelve, city council formal items. Under A, resolution authorizing actions for abatement of nuisance at eighteen sixteen twenty ninth Street, Two Rivers, Wisconsin, fire damaged property. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution, and we'll swing that one over to Greg.
Yes, you have a resolution in your packet. It's prepared by the city attorney. I'm I'm sorry, I meant to provide some more background on this, but um, if you may be familiar with the location, there was a fairly major structural fire at this house at eighteen sixteen twenty ninth Street back in February. It presents kind of an unusual situation. We know there's insurance on the property. We know there's no mortgage on the property. However, uh, neither the insurance company, the city, nor anybody else, to my knowledge, has been able to reach the property owner since the fire occurred. Uh, there are family members that are tending to keeping the grass mowed and doing the basics, but in in the midst of a very solid Two Rivers neighborhood, you've got uh, a fire damaged house just sitting there with nothing happening as we approach six months since the fire. Now, uh, Jack can expound on this more than I can, but uh, you know, Wisconsin law affords pretty broad protection for private property owners, as it should. The city can't just waltz in and say, well, we're going to fix it up or tear it down. So what this resolution would do would be to authorize our city attorney to move forward with a court filing to uh, obtain an inspection warrant to be able to go back into the property and assess the extent of damage and what might it cost to bring the property up to code, whether that's just on the outside or outside and inside. How does uh, is is it to the point where it exceeds half of the value of the property, in which case the city could likewise seek to have it demolished? Uh, unless the the owner all of a sudden appears and deals with his insurance company and takes responsibility. If this proceeds with the city doing an inspection, affecting the repairs or doing the demo, it will of necessity mean the city fronting some money, maybe a substantial sum of money on the property. Uh, not going to hazard a guess, you can generally tear buildings down for thirty thousand or so. I would hope it's a salvageable home. Uh, the city would have the ability to affect a lien on the property, and we know there's not a mortgage out ahead of us, or ahead of anyone right now, uh, given a title search that was done on the property. And likewise, I'll let Jax be to, but it would be our intent certainly to pursue insurance coverage that the homeowner has historically paid for. But uh, it's past time, something happens with this property, and I I really think this is one of those instances where the city needs to step up and do what's best. Jack can answer the question.
The insurance company would be made a party to the action. Uh, as well as the owner. Service on the owner might require publication and mailing. Unfortunately, that's just the situation uh, when a person cannot be located. But the idea would be to uh, find out exactly the extent of damages. Uh, if it's to the extent that there are real hazards for for occupation that cannot be corrected, then trying to get a raise order from the court and do the best we can to get a court order requiring uh, the insurance company to honor bills incurred. Excuse me.
We we would recommend council approval of the resolution as presented in your packet.
Well, is this essentially an abandoned? Is that what we're calling, we're saying?
I think that's a fair, that's a fair way to put it.
Because of abandonment, we can, we can do this abatement?
Well, following proper notice.
That's I I always recommend whenever property is entered into, whenever uh, modifications are made to property, uh, there is legal authority for a municipality to do that in these circumstances, but I'd much rather have a court order in hand to protect the city against possible uh, counter actions, counter claims or separate suit. Um, so that's the idea of bringing it to the court, giving what notice we can as appropriate under law, taking action, all with the blessing of the courts.
And as a city, we've been made aware of this property by the other people that live on that block that are starting to get quite a bit frustrated. And I think it's time that the city does step in to to do something with this, because it's a nice neighborhood and and they shouldn't have a house just sitting there kind of depleting away. Yeah, the grass is being cut, stuff's being picked up, but you can't just let a house just sit there.
The house secured, so no?
There's a board up done after the fire. I, my understanding, it's secured. It ain't pretty. It's got melted siding and uh, it's clearly a fire damaged property.
Usually, the insurance, it says that it takes about a year. They'll come in, they'll have someone board it up, and then they have uh, people come in to see what the cause of the fire was, who that the insurance company can sue to help pay for everything. And a lot of times, it can take six months to get the ball rolling to get everybody in line, especially with materials and stuff, as we're talking about other stuff.
Yeah, and the and the odd thing here is, again, you don't have an owner actively engaged, which is why. Chief, you speak to the, some of the history of this.
To our understanding, so the, we did have the fire in February. The homeowner was there at the time. Since that time, uh, all those processes have been completed. The insurance company has been in, they've determined a clause and all of that, that the check has basically been cut. The insurance company wants to fix the place, and the owner is nowhere to be found.
I gotta say, it's a very unusual circumstance. It's, you know.
It is, it is a nice residence. It's a great block. It's just, you know, when when the owner's MIA, having that type of building that is in need of repair, massive repair, unfortunately, it's it's becoming a blade on the rest of the neighborhood.
Hopefully, the insurance company will cooperate with us.
Insurance company's been trying to find the owner as well.
Yeah, I understand that. I have the same problem.
Your insurance wants to do what's right. City sure wants them to do what's right, but the key thing that's missing is the title owner of the property is nowhere to be found.
So it's, it's time we act as a council on this and get this thing going, because this can be a long process. And talking with Greg last week, this can be a long process, and that process really has to get started now.
And I can tell you, you know, folks in the neighborhood I've talked to, they are very appreciative of what family members are doing of 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 their own goodwill to try to maintain the property, you know, the mow the grass, cut the weeds, that sort of thing. But uh, this is not going to be a fast process, and we'd best get it started.
But we're looking for a motion on this. Scott, thank you. Do I have a second? Jeff, on the second, thank you. Any other council discussion that we can discuss among ourselves? Or ask Chief for questions, or Jack?
Thanks, Chief.
See, none. Uh, roll call vote. Jamie?
Bill Leclair?
Aye.
Darla Leclair?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Jason Ring?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Talke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
On to B, city manager's appointment to the committee on aging. The recommended action, a motion to approve the appointment of Kyle Kornick to the committee on aging to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty four, filling the vacancy of Kim Grair's. Do you need anything to add to that?
Um, appreciative of this volunteer interest from Kyle Kornick. He's director of instruction and learning for the Two Rivers Public Schools. And as he shares in his comments section, my words, not his, he's uh, he's moving on up shortly. Uh, he'll be moving to Two Rivers from his current address in Manitowoc the end of August. And I I think it's great to see that interest someone involved in their job with the youth of our community, likewise though, showing this interest in uh, serving the needs of the seniors that make up such a big part of of the community. So happy to recommend it.
Looking for a motion. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We'll go with Darla. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you on that. On to C, action on whether or not to upgrade cable equipment for broadcasting. Council requested staff to attain numbers from Spectrum on viewership and market penetration. Staff to also provide numbers on YouTube views. The recommended action is a council discretion. We do have a chart or a table in our packet, page sixty nine. Uh, Greg, do you want to walk us through it?
Oh, yes, actually, I might defer to Rick Powell, our IT director on the stats we have from YouTube. They're, they're pretty straightforward, actually, as you as you look at it. Rick can still feel free to comment on it, but um, this shows various specific meetings or other activities that have been shared on YouTube, the number of views. Um, you know, and we're seeing at least this summer, when uh, watching on cable is not an option right now due to uh, the equipment issues we faced. Um, you know, start looking at Ju- the June-July numbers, uh, you know, uh, anywhere from a hundred forty-five to two hundred sixty-one views in May, June, July, uh, some other uh, well, they're all ranked in in order. We got to do a better job of publicizing candidate forums, looking at some of the viewership that was shown there uh, for candidate forums. I can tell you from um, uh, discussion with Representative of Charter Communicat- excuse me, of Spectrum. Um, and I apologize, it wasn't in your packets, because the gentleman had a family emergency come up, so he wasn't able to talk with Rick on Thursday or Friday of last week, when he had promised to call back. To his credit, um, I'll say this, I'll give Chart, I'll give Spectrum some credit. He did give me a call on my cellphone at eight o'clock Friday night and affirmed that the two options, as shown on your sheet there, uh, the the larger figure, and I'm sorry, I think I gave all of mine out, which is like twenty-eight thousand dollars upfront investment, uh, does get you thirty-six months of airing, thank you, of airing the meetings at no charge. Uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars, or you could do it with fifty-four hundred and thirty-five dollars down and seven hundred and ninety-five dollars a month as an alternative, but that would require a thirty-six month commitment. So basically, Spectrum recoups their dollars, and the the math works out. They must be earning a little interest, but it it comes out pretty close there if you look at the two alternatives. Um, and again, there are no, I'm told there are no stats available for viewership on that uh, PEG channel, so-called Public Educational and Governmental Channel. Uh, there would be in the future if we were on uh, digital. But I assume because Charter doesn't make any money on public access channels, they tell us at least that they have no viewership data on that. Um, so, you know, we don't know how many folks in the community watch, have been used to watching up until May or so, the meetings on cable TV. But uh, I know our office has heard from folks, it tends to I think be older residents of the community that are less comfortable with technology to watch the meetings streamed on Facebook or YouTube. Um, this would add a cost that we don't incur now. I'm not saying it's outrageous, but it's an added cost whichever way you cut it, which I'll defer to council on. So that's where we are.
All right, why don't we get a motion on this, so we can discuss it among ourselves?
A motion?
What's the motion? We're at council discretion. So are you looking to make a motion to upgrade the cable equipment or to not upgrade?
Make a motion to upgrade cable equipment.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Scott, thank you very much. All right, council discussion.
What fund did you say this was going to come out of?
Uh, I didn't. You noticed that, huh? Um, we, you know, we certainly, you know, would probably look at our capital budgets. It could honestly, we we haven't looked at it. We could probably be spending some of our ARPA money on it if it was, say, the twenty-eight thousand dollar expenditure, because it is a way, it's it's contactless communication. I'd want our finance director to vet that uh, first, but that that might very well be an option. Otherwise, we'd probably look at where can, where might we amend our capital budget? We we don't have twenty-eight thousand land in a drawer, but it might be something we could utilize, ARPA dollars or some of our existing capital funds.
Anybody else? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay. Um, you did say that if we go with this system, we'd be able to capture how many people are actually watching it?
That's what we are told, yes, yeah.
Okay, so if it turns out that there's just, I don't know, just five people or whatever. I mean, we'd have to make a decision if we want to continue doing this after three months too. And I'm not discounting these three people, but it's so darn expensive.
I don't want to interrupt you, but is it three months or three years?
Three years.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
It's either twenty-eight thousand in a lump sum upfront payment by the city, and you get three years for free if you want to view it that way. Or uh, fifty-five hundred dollars, whatever the number is, or plus seven ninety-five a month for a minimum commitment of thirty-six months, three years.
I'm sorry.
It's more expensive than option one. If you do the math, option two actually comes out to be more than option one.
Yeah.
About six thousand, I figure, but.
Yeah, they're factoring a little bit of a, of an interest factor in there.
My assumption, and we'd have to get an answer to it, but if we went with the three years and we paid the increment of, what is it, five thou- I don't, what, whatever that monthly rate is? My assumption is if the equipment broke between now and then, that they would be on the hook for replacing it, not the city of Two Rivers.
That's my understanding. We certainly could follow up if the council takes action and get written confirmation of that.
So I I think that would be the other, other angle to this, if it broke, you know, after its warranty, maybe of a year, and broken year two, we'd be on the hook to replace that or shut it down.
And my understanding Charter doesn't, they're not in the business of selling equipment. This is to justify them investing in the capacity in their system. They own it, uh, as I understand it, at least for that three-year period, we know that they'd be good for it, that they would be capable of providing that service reliably.
Previous to this, we didn't have a monthly payment, did we? It was, we paid for the equipment, and then we were using the equipment.
Correct, yep, yep, and ultimately, the equipment failed. You know, back in the, back in the old days, when we used, when individual cities negotiated usually ten-year franchise agreements with the cable company, that was often the closer on the DOL. How about twenty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars to help with capital costs for our s- our system? Well, sub quite a few years ago now, probably fifteen or more, the state of Wisconsin said, oh, no, 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 we're going to do a uniform franchise statewide, uh, all these pesky little cities getting in the way, you know, negotiating with the cable company. I'm sorry, they have lobbyists in Madison with campaign contributions. We don't. Uh, and often, that's what it comes down to, just as an aside. So we don't have that tool anymore. And uh, yeah, that was, that was awfully nice in the day.
Anybody else? Bonnie?
I just have a question. I, I'm looking at this table data, and that was for this, was that for this? This, I mean, to tell us information on helping us?
No, those were, those were, there was also a question, what's the viewership on YouTube of?
Oh, this is from YouTube?
That's from YouTube. You have no, no relate, we have no numbers on cable viewership for your meetings.
But we keep getting surprisingly more popular. I mean, it starts with one view for months and months and months.
Rerun season, so you know, you're, you're live, uh, and totally unscripted.
Well, it just surprised me.
Yeah, and and the option of watching it on cable TV went away, and so I I would expect, at the margins, that pushed some people over. My wife might be watching now on her, on her, you know, uh, digital device. She'd rather have it running in background as c- on cable, so she could do other things.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else? Jeff?
I'm just going back to what several people had contacted me about and said that they really thought we should have it, just for informational purposes for them.
I I think I almost lean more towards doing it. I I hate to spend the twenty-eight thousand dollars on it. Hopefully, we can use ARPA money. Uh, but there are people out there, let's face it, that don't have the technology to jump on YouTube, may not even have the internet. And and I know of those people. I know of a person that's on advisory record with us that does not have the internet. No other way for them, unfortunately, to view this. They still rely on Charter and that we shouldn't be keeping them in the dark, and it's easy for us to say, hey, come to the meeting, but sometimes when you're in your seventies, you don't really feel like coming to a meeting at six o'clock at night. A lot of times, they're getting ready for bed and they watch it from the convenience of their house, but don't want to be left in the dark, and we got to understand those people as well and and make sure that they're staying informed somehow, because they don't really, not that they don't have access to the internet, but I don't think they're YouTube subscribers, let's put it that way.
What else can we use this for? Is it for?
We certainly could be sharing other information, because it's it's pretty much right now dead, or was, dead air when the city wasn't using it. We used to We used to do some public ser- PSA-type slides or stills. We don't really, obviously we don't have a budget for programming. We could be, we could be sharing some things off the shelf, if you will, other YouTube videos the city has, just we, historically, we've not dedicated any staff time or resources to it. You know, there's still, there's still small cities like us that have really active volunteers that do local cable programming, that's an, that's another whole can of worms, sometimes you get into that, because are they politically neutral or what have you? But there are other things we could do with the resources dedicated to it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, we're putting stuff into the utility bills and stuff like that, but we could also put it on the, on the station as slides, just going through.
Or things we're putting, things we're putting, it could mirror our Facebook posts or things on the website.
Right back when the police department used to do some videos on there, way back in the heyday, did you not, right, chief? I remember seeing those things on there. You could have Chief Colmire front and center again.
Yeah, and we had the fire department slide that was on there for, forever about changing, changing the batteries in your smoke detector. I still remember that one fondly.
Hopefully they're changed by now. Jeff?
Well, actually Greg, we could televise music in the park. Or we could actually televise the movies on the beach, or we could probably, I mean, if it's made for.
I, my only caution there, and I, I, I say this, uh, uh, being on the church council or go to church, when we got into televising services, you do get into some copyright and licensing issues that hopefully a band is taken care of, but, and we pay them for this gig, you could, technically you could.
Right.
Uh, that gets you over into a whole licensing and permission.
Movies and music.
Royalties.
Yeah, you know, or even like when we have the car show where we could, you know, televise all cars coming on the road and.
Oh, no question, you could do all of those things.
Right.
So, is the cable company got it slotted for twice a month for an hour or three hours?
Again, that, that channel's there all the time. Yeah, I know, I, I don't know that.
It makes to know what you're spending your money on, you know.
Like, all I can tell you is, you know, our cable franchise fee revenue stays pretty stable. Of course, rates go up. But.
I mean, we will get better data on that if we do go through with this, because they said being on the digitals, I think that's what you just said earlier, right? Being digital, we would be able to get that information after three years and help us better uh, engage in this the next time we have to with, with some more real data.
I have to agree with you, um. It, it's gonna take us going to three years to figure out if the service is actually being used, but I'll tell you what, I think it's gonna be less painful if we could fill more time on the station, uh, bring back TR talks, um, do something like that. I mean, there's a lot that we can do and I, I I totally agree with you, you might run into some licensing problems, but let's at least explore the we don't have a, we don't have a city newspaper. You know, this could be maybe in place of it, and I know that would require staff time, but maybe that's something that volunteers could get in, into too, especially if it's like someone who's got a media background. I, I think it's worth exploring. I, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't, I'd be hesitant to go with voting for this if we didn't try to fill the time and really take advantage of it.
Jason?
Uh, I know we talked about where to fund this and, you know, if, and I don't know, I'm still the new guy, um, so ARPA funds and how they're designated and if if there are funds that we have through ARPA that are undesignedated that we, you know, uh, have the ability to use on this, that would make this a much easier um, thing for me to support, because then I'm looking at that as being dollars that we are granted for things like communication during pandemic, and this is something that maybe.
Don't take it to the bank, but I did throw that out.
Yeah, and I got a look from the finance director that was a definite maybe or possibility, or, yeah, that's the look I got.
And it's all about opportunity costs. I mean, twenty-eight thousand dollars, it's not a lot, it's probably nine fewer lead service laterals. And it's matching money from the county foregone, and I'm not dissing it, because it, it is, we hear at our office from people that really miss seeing the meetings on cable.
Well, and I think that gives us three years to study how many people use it, how people, how we can use it, how people are using it, how many people are tuning in. Um, but, you know, I, I see the, the internet taking over uh, from the cable channels, you know, so many people aren't paying for cable service, they're instead streaming their TV online, you know, and as rates go up for cable and are still more affordable with some of the streaming services, we're gonna see more and more people dropping their cable and just having their internet through Charter, so uh, I think, you know, there are those possibilities that in three years, it might be a completely different thing, you know.
As part of this motion, and it's up to Jeff and Scott, I believe, but I think we should be sending this back to staff to explore both the opportunities, like there's opportunity by paying by month with one, with the five thousand dollars down, does that include if some breaks between now and that, three years, is that covered? So we can better understand what direction to go to pay for it. And then we should also have it in writing, are we gonna get data from this throughout the three-year agreement that we have? And then also obviously from Dave Bus, if we can figure out if we can use ARPA money or what other solutions, if we can't, can we tap into to try to pay for this? So I, I think coming out of this, we should add that as part of that motion, because we still don't know exactly how we can pay for it, and we still don't know exactly if we're paying for it at twenty-eight thousand dollars, or if we're paying for it on a monthly fee, and which one's gonna be a better opportunity for the city. Again, that's up to the mover and the shaker. I don't know if I missed anything, do you have any?
And just doing the math quick, and, and Scott had done it as well, I, I think we'd be better off if, either way, you're making effectively a three-year commitment, we'd be better off allocating twenty-eight thousand dollars now and uh, and dealing with it. So if I understand, you'd want more information from staff as to the guarantees of what we're getting going forward in terms of zero cost to the city for equipment and maintenance beyond what we're paying. Uh, affirmation that we'll get viewership information and in what form, and then a recommendation for a budget amendment for this to be done.
Right, where the money's gonna come from. But we should still come out of here with a motion for support to make the staff go through all of this, if this is something that we truly want to do. Are you applicable to that? Okay.
Motion, motion to direct staff to, to return a report regarding specifics of uh, assurances from Charter about what, what we're buying here, that it indeed is three years of service with no additional cost to the city.
Even if it breaks?
Right. Uh, some written information as to what sort of analytics or viewership information would be available. And then finally, a recommended budget amendment that would identify funding source for the twenty-eight thousand dollar cost. I was gonna call it capital, but the twenty-eight thousand dollar one-time cost.
Scott, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. Earl?
Um, weren't we gonna find out about like the warranty?
Yep, we wanted to make sure that there was no extra cost, so even if it breaks, there's no extra cost.
And also, we'll, we'll do what we can if there's low-hanging fruit on sharing existing resources on this channel. There ain't any, there ain't staff time, uh, unencumbered right now to, to do any significant programming for cable TV. That's, that's not in the cards, but there are things available.
Slides, I think would be a good start.
Yeah, yeah.
I got another question. If we're, if we use this service and we fill it up with really good stuff, um, is there a way that that can then be communicated onto our YouTube?
That'd be a better cross question for Rick, I would imagine. Can you dub that onto YouTube from Charter and air them both at the same time?
Um, if it's in this room, for sure, we could, we could do them simulcast, but I don't know to be honest, if we had just something going to the Charter channel, if that could be somehow ported, I mean, I think we're talking about a whole nother piece of technology that we would have to be able to, you know, work with Spectrum on, so.
So even if we did community service announcements through here, maybe the police department, fire department, whomever decided to do some community goodwill of some sort to get, get some information out, if they did it from this room, you could simulcast it on both. That, would that be a correct analysis? This, yep, okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else? We'll send this as a roll co-vote, because we discussed that earlier. Go ahead, Jamie.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Woski.
Aye.
Jeff Dahlke.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll, uh, we'll bring this back for August one, regular meeting, so that's okay.
Thank you. On to Dee, discuss options for council consideration of public input via Facebook. Recommended action, council discretion.
We, we, I gotta admit, we haven't done a huge amount of staff homework on direct input to council via Facebook. I think we, the last discussion on this, clearly different council members have different philosophies about the amount of weight they might put on input via Facebook, and that's your, your nine individuals there. As far as facilitating people being aware of what's on agendas and reaching out to the council if they want to comment by, I guess I'd say by more traditional means, we did for the last two weeks resume what, resume a practice that we'd want to do consistently of sharing the monthly, excuse me, sharing the next week's meeting calendar on Facebook on the city's page with a link where, you know, find out what's happening at next week's meetings, that takes you to the spot on the city website that has those agendas. Uh, so we're doing that right now. That isn't saying that there's a way people post something on Facebook and it streams to each of your inboxes, but at least it should heighten people's awareness of agendas. Uh, this afternoon, I briefly posted this and then took a screenshot and took it down. Whoops, what the heck happened to it? But, oh, yes, uh, we had als- also discussed today, um, myself and Lisa, my assistant and Jamie, after that weekly notification of the next week's public meetings comes out, that usually comes out on Thursday, late in the day on Friday or sometime after that, we could certainly routinely post the city council meeting agenda and remind people they have options that include coming to the meeting and actually speaking to you guys during public input. Uh, as we print on the agendas now, calling the city manager or clerk's office at the numbers listed on the top of the agenda to arrange to address the council directly by telephone. We, folks don't call on us too often to do that, but that is an option that's been available for a long time. Or clicking on a link that we'd again put in the Facebook page a post that goes to the spot on our website, our new website, where we now have a contact or council member's form that with a click automatically, you know, fill in the fields and you're sending an email that goes to all nine city council members, the city clerk and the city manager's office. Um, certainly we, our, our thought as staff is we can use Facebook to make folks more aware of those opportunities for input that are literally just a click away. But we were a bit stumped as to how to, you know, directly solicit feedback to the council via Facebook in an institutional way. You, you all can certainly, you know, browse any Facebook group or page that, that you want to. But these, these were ways we thought we could at least, and whether you want to designate that there are certain uh, community uh, Facebook groups that we would routinely share these to. They seem to do a pretty good job of watching for our city hall posts and sharing them organically. But if you wanted it to, you know, the three or four at least that I'm aware of, if you wanted it routinely shared to Two Rivers News and Information, or You're From Two Rivers If, or whatever, that certainly could be part of a protocol. But again, there's some, there are some downsides to just again, input to the council is supposed to be input to the council, so you know what the people you represent think and how they feel on issues. It isn't generally meant to provide a public forum for someone to share their view with the rest of the community. When somebody comes to the lectern up here, they're always asked to address the council. It's to give input to you as their elected reps. Facebook has some problems in that regard, and as we know, posts can be deleted. I'm not saying you shouldn't pay attention to Facebook, just like you do the person behind you in line at the grocery store or sitting next to you in church or best or whatever, but it just seems if we're doing our job and advising the public of meetings, of the opportunities for input using, using Facebook as that outreach tool, again, it doesn't take any more keystrokes to do an email to council using a, a, a pre-programmed form than it does to do a Facebook post. And then it goes through our website, it's properly protected and preserved as a public record, it doesn't disappear um, overnight, um, so.
I think what they're getting at, and I had a prime example of it over the weekend, um, there was a story on lead laterals, which I brought up tonight. There was a story on the lead laterals and somebody tagged my name, so I would see it and said, what is the city doing about that? So I, I think what Jeff and Scott were getting at is if their name is tagged in something like that, much like I did today, they want to be able to bring that story forward at council, much like I did today, even though it came from Facebook. I know the person was from Two Rivers, pretty simple and easy to find that out. And I did, and I think that's kind of what they, they want some credibility behind that, because in the past, I know some people would say, well, that's just Facebook chatter. But sometimes it's legit, like somebody really want to know how we were handling our lead laterals. I think the story that I was tagged and came out of Green Bay and how they're handling it, and they wanted precisely me to read that story and say, how are we doing it? And I think that was easier for them to do than it was to try to email me, copy and paste or however they want, want me to read that story on an email, it was much easier for them just to click my name and say, hey, here's what I saw, this is how they're doing it here, how are we doing it? And, and I think from my understanding, that's kind of what they're getting at, that they want some credibility behind some of those posts that are on Facebook.
Yes, exactly, and that's, that's really, I, I guess I would say on you guys as nine elected council members, because it it is very legitimate communication.
Right, I just think in past, sometimes people on council would say, well, that's just Facebook, and they would kind of discredit it, and they did. I think what they're trying to say is can we get some credit behind what some of the people are saying on Facebook that they asked me to read, if it's a particular story? Or in my case, again, lead laterals. It was a legit story from a legit residence.
Right, I mean, if we are posting this out there on Facebook, we should be able to take some of that input that comes back from stuff. Otherwise, we shouldn't be doing this.
I mean, I don't think we need to get crazy, we need to be taking every, everyone's opinion, because you're gonna get a lot of different opinions on certain topics, and some people may be residents, some people may not be, but there are times, again, I don't want to keep beating, beating the horse here, but lead lateral story was a legit story, it was something that they wanted me to bring up to council and say, and that's why I asked you to reiterate kind of what we started working on at, I think, last budget period. I think it's when we started that, when we started talking about the county's match.
And I, and I get that too, I mean, I get called out on Facebook and sometimes I respond, sometimes I don't. Sometimes it's so off the wall, I choose not to, but that.
I think we're trying to use it as our, our discretion, whether we want to or not.
Legitimate, I, but if, I wasn't sure, you know, if we were looking at somehow using Facebook as a substitute or an on-ramp for formal feedback to the council as a body like someone showing up here or submitting something, and right, that's where it gets a little tricky.
I, I didn't understand it that way, and maybe I'm not understanding it correctly, I was understanding it similar to the story that I just kind of said.
If individual council, it's really, I mean, if somebody can get elected and re-elected scoffing at the idea of Facebook, more power to them, but I think most of you would be respectful of people reaching out to you. I've heard those comments too, because frankly, there's a lot of baseless crap on Facebook, and some of it comes from our own, with all respects, from our own citizens. But there's also a whole lot of legitimate information out there.
I think they just want to bring to light the legitimate stuff and make sure that the rest of the council respects that, when it, just because it came in on Facebook, doesn't mean it should be discredited.
Correct, yes, you, you said it exactly, and that's how I feel, I'm not gonna speak for Jeff, but that's exactly my feeling behind it. It's, it's no different than, you know, someone tapping on the shoulder um, at a grocery store or something, saying, hey, blah, blah, blah. Why can't it happen through Facebook? It's, you know, a lot of people do it, it's easy, they can email, whatever. I think it's just another form of communication to just talk to us.
Jeff, is that, did we kind of nail it on the head as to what we're kind of trying to get at? We're not trying to get into those ones where you see sixty-three replies that, that goes in depth about stuff that's half it's not even true.
And just the caution that I'm sure our city attorney would offer, if, don't, uh, watch, watch out, and I've never seen it, uh, you know, I'd get worried if all of a sudden there were four or five, especially five, council members participating in a, in a dialogue through comments, because then you're getting more into open meetings, uh, territory there. But I honestly have never witnessed that happen.
I'm, I'm cautious of those numbers when they come up too.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's more than two people at it from council that adds something, I, I just back off.
Jason? Yeah, and as, as described today, I mean, I think, uh, you know, if, if you want to bring up under, you know, citizen communications to you that, hey, you were reached out through by social media, like the ad and the way you presented it, that was spot-on perfect, you know? Um, and if, if everybody wants to use it that way or not, I'd. Um, and if, if everybody wants to use it that way or not, I, I would say that's up to the individual council person, how they take that. Uh, I think also if you're reached out to as a council person and as you're tagged in a post, um, you know, it's on you to, whether you, uh, choose to respond to that or not. That's you choosing to respond, your constituent or not. There may be times when you're tagged in a post that's sarcastic or has a, a inappropriate meme or something in it. You know, I, I wouldn't expect you to respond to something like that. Uh, I certainly wouldn't. So, you know, I guess that would be, um, something that I'd like people to know that, you know, if, if reached out to in a respectful way, it doesn't matter if it's through social media, through email, through speaking in front of the, the council here, uh, so long as it's done in a respectful way, uh, the, the response, you know, should be given. But like we talked about, we have to be careful about, uh, you know, walking quorum or through that way electronically. So I, I hope, uh, the constituents that are listening at home, uh, will understand that, you know? If, if we don't all chime in on something through social media, but it is a way, uh, so to reach out to some of our constituents. And, and I think that, you know, as a council person, your, your folks should know if that's a way to contact you or not, you know? That I don't think anybody should be offended if you're not replied to on social media, if you're not comfortable replying in that way. So that's, that's something that you just need to make sure you convey to the people in the community.
I have already used that one. People would say something, I would tell them, okay, no, private message me, but at least I got the information from there to, to carry forward with it.
I don't know that we really need any motion or direction other than kind of what we discussed. I think everybody's, from what I see and can tell, everyone's kind of on the same page here with it. I, I don't think you really need a motion to come out of this, then I think, uh, I think we're all under the understanding then. Unless somebody wants one. If somebody wants one, go, go ahead and make one. I'm not stopping either.
Make a motion to not.
No. No, but if somebody wants to make a motion to add something, I, I, again, I'm not going to stop you. Very good. We don't need a motion, right? Thank you. Onto E, which is recommendation from the Public Works Committee, meeting on July sixth, twenty twenty-two. Looks like we have four of them. Under one, we have a traffic control on Buckholz Street at Eighth and Ninth Streets. The recommended action is a motion to install yield signs on Buckholz Street at Eighth and Ninth Street. Uh, do you want background on that? You, Jim?
I guess unless there's specifics that either the police department or Public Works, Jim, uh, either if you want to share on these. Otherwise I'd just refer you to the committee minutes.
I mean, we do have, we do have a map in front of us with minutes. So, I mean, if we do have questions that aren't answered in there, we can certainly ask them as well.
Had numerous, over the years, we've had some numerous off and on complaints about issues on these streets. This is just a summation in order to take care of them. Uh, if you have any specific questions, tackle those. Otherwise, rec- recommendations are pretty straightforward. Uh, like on this street, I think, uh, all of the other intersections have yield signs. These two do not, for example.
Let's show on page seventy-six, I believe, of your packet.
Seventy-five, seventy-six.
Five, I'm sorry.
Seventy-six, I think. Good. Seventy-six is buckles.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, seventy, seventy-six.
Just to, the, the philosophy on yield signs versus stop signs.
That's.
Seeing how it bends up there.
Um, I don't remember the full history. I think, uh, um, K Coach, I think was, was one of them.
K has recommended him for years.
Yeah, so that, it started off years ago, especially around Kinnick School to the north of there to ease the, the problems up in that area. And really what is suggested here is making it consistent on the south side of the, the property.
Yeah, there are a lot of yield signs around that neighborhood as you look at the map.
That'll make it more consistent. The other issue that had been coming before the public works, before I started attending and then continued on was the, the accidents, I guess, or close call accidents and speeding in that, in that area um, south of the school. And then ironically, the one time that the Public Works Committee didn't get um, a complaint about it, literally the only week we had a bus versus vehicle, um, accident, a transit bus. Um, so that was shared. And again, since then, I've also been consistently going to those public works because I think I can be more of an asset for the questioning and this kind of stuff.
Thank you. Now that's good interaction at the committee.
Does go unstated, uh, in our minutes is the, uh, excuse me, the, um, uh, intention to post, uh, some, uh, some of those flashing, you're going too fast signs periodically and keep moving them around as best we can to on these and some other areas throughout town.
Are we good with yield signs? I mean, do we think that'll stop the problems? As you said, there was an accident with a bus. I mean, obviously yield, you gotta slow down and look better than an uncontrolled intersection.
Yeah, and that uncontrolled intersection at the time, there was no yield from either side. It was clear, it was crystal clear. We actually had video of it that was shared with, with the Public Works Committee.
The yield would be recommended from the police department as well as from the public works.
We're in agreement with.
Okay, okay. All right, looking for a motion on this and then we can get in the council discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jason. Do I have a second? Thank you, Scott. Council discussion. Jason.
So I live right there. Um, and, uh, uncontrolled intersections are always, uh, just that, that weird one because you, you don't know who's not looking out. So me, I'm always quite cautious and uncontrolled intersections. I like a little bit of comfort that the yield sign gives that, that you know, at least somebody else has been, you know, made to see a sign and maybe think ahead a little bit, you know? But typically when you're driving, you should be thinking out for the other guy, you know, looking out for the other guy. Um, but yeah, being that, that, uh, I, I drive that way just about every day. Um, I think it's, uh, something that a yield sign could certainly improve some of those near misses or, or, you know, kind of reckless driving in that area.
Anybody else?
It's unfortunate that we have to put up a sign because we have uncont-. Close to you. Sign for.
We can't even keep bicycles off sidewalks. There's not a lot of common sense sometimes.
Perplex me is putting up a stop sign at a T intersection. That should not have to be done either.
Yeah, but yeah, you're right. I mean, they don't even have to do driver's tests anymore though. I mean, the on, the actual road course test. You can just, no, your parents can just sign you off now. You gotta take the actual written test, but you don't have to get behind the wheel with the DMV person anymore. I think so too. Donny.
Um, I'll vote for this, but you know, you say, why should we put up yield signs and so forth? When I was on my way to this meeting, I was served in line at a red light and the first guy made a left turn. I was like, wow. So you see, it's just ma- it just depends on who you are and how dumb you are.
A little left and a right to vote for God's sake.
Any other council discussion as it pertains to this? See none. Jamie, roll call please.
Darlo Leclair.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we got a couple more of these. Under two, we have traffic control on Lowell Street between Thirty-Sixth Street and Forty-Fourth Street. Recommended action is a motion to install yield signs on Lowell Street at Thirty-Eighth, Thirty-Ninth and installation of stop signs on Lowell Street at Forty-Fourth Street and on Thirty-Sixth Street at Lowell Street. That's a lot to chew on right there. Uh, do we have any background on this as to possibly why?
Lot of the same scenarios, a lot of the same scenarios, complaints and, um, um, resolutions. The, uh, streets are kind of right next to each other and they're experiencing the same kind of problems.
And we're right up against McGee School as well. So another school in that area.
Someone.
Some on that area, some a little bit north.
Someone last week, last being mentioned, um, I three-ten. This is kind of Iwo. Um, I live on, on Forty-first Street in the Dead End. I go that way, you know, same as Jason was too, and go that way all the time. When kids are leaving from school from McGee, that's the street they walk on is Wall Street and people are just baring about up and down that street. Um, and not really slowing down or anything with uncontrolled intersections. So it's definitely I think a good idea. And that's what we talked about in the committee meeting.
All right, we're looking for a motion out of this one.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Any further council discussion?
I will note in the agenda, it doesn't say anything about Forty-first Street, but on the map it does.
It does have a yield sign there. Is that already existing or is that, no, no, because it says proposed down here.
And Jack, we're okay adding that as long as we're talking about traffic control measures on Lowell Street, right?
Yeah.
Well, we can add that to the motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, adding forty, Forty-first Street to that motion, Bill. Okay, thank you. So we're good to go on that. Good pickup there, Scott. Any other council discussion? Is that intended as we talk to you guys? Is that a typo of any sort or is that just a typo on the agenda?
I think. It's on the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so it looks like that was a recommendation coming out of Public Works anyway, so no further council discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Jamie.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darlo Leclair.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, good work on that one. Onto three, parking revisions to parking restrictions around McGee School and traffic control on Lowell Street north of McGee School. Recommended action, motion to allow parking on east side of Glenwood, Thirty-Fourth through Thirty-Sixth Street, allowing parking on the west side of Glenwood, Thirty-Fourth to south of Thirty-Fifth Street. Extend the no-stopping or parking area on the south side of Thirty-Sixth Street from Glenwood Street to the west end of the west driveway on said street. Place no parking here to corner, signs at end of existing yellow curb at intersection of Thirty-Fifth Street and Glenwood. That's a lot to chew on as well.
Yeah, that's clear as mud, I'm sure, but, um, basically it's a, an historical set of signs and circumstances to control parking around the school. Um, and the principal has, uh, uh, requested that we make these changes.
We should note for the record, Chad, the principal from McGee is here. Thanks for being here, Chad.
See no problem with doing this and think it's a good idea, actually.
Okay, I think Bill has made that motion. And do I have a second to Bill's motion?
Looking at it.
Thank you, Jeff. Council discussion, if any. Looking good. Roll call vote. Jamie.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darlo Leclair.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, on to the fourth and final, proposed revision to parking restrictions on West Park Street and adjacent areas on Seventeenth and Eighteenth Street. The recommended action is a motion to establish three-hour parking on the south side of Eighteenth Street and the north side of Seventeenth Street, both between Adams Street and Washington Street and along West Park Street. Uh, background along with this, was this a, for, we had a topic about this.
This was referred actually to the committee from council and then referred back again. Um, presently, correct me if I'm wrong, these areas all, all have a two-hour parking restriction, like much of the downtown. The Public Works Committee initially had recommended, uh, eliminating a time limit, partly, I think, respecting some feedback from the police department about limited resources for enforcement, which is true throughout the community when it comes to parking. Although we also have a full-time code enforcement officer who will maybe have a little bit of time for parking. But, um, of course, concern with activities at the community house and with the new business making a considerable investment at the old Wells Fargo Bank about potentially letting people park all the live long day on these streets. So, uh, I believe three hour was seen as sort of a compromise that would accommodate a leisurely lunch or um, activity at the community house, but wouldn't allow spaces to be tied up all day.
Is this between a period of the daytime, like eight to five excluding weekends, or is this a twenty-four, seven?
Didn't address that, but I think it was intended to be, um, um, those limits during the time in which you can legally park there anyway.
Which other than winter parking ban time is twenty-four hours. Yeah.
That's a twenty-four hour.
Well, I mean, you can, the three, without it being specified otherwise, the three-hour limit would apply at all times. Uh, there really won't be enforcement resources on, say, third shift to enforce it, but.
I guess I was just asking for activities that may happen at the community house, possibly like, um, no, what's that called where they sell the toilet seats?
Hardorama.
Thank you, hardorama. That may exceed the three hours. I'm just wondering if.
We had talked about like certain events or even if you have a ban down there, that those are things that could be waived, just like we currently waive laws ordinances or something like that when that permit comes available.
Okay, so when that permit comes available, we will waive those parking restrictions as part of that permit? Yes? Okay.
Yeah, that's how I think you could best address that as a council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we do not have a motion, so it can only be, go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to ask, um, we had talked about moving city vehicles across the street to that parking lot. So that will give us more parking spaces.
And that's been authorized by council.
Right, and when's that going to happen? I noticed that all the, that the vehicles are still where they.
Right now, we're re- we're in the process of starting the restriping of the lot. That may not start until, I mean, I guess I've, we've viewed the deadline as well. By the time the business opens that wants to be using part of the parking lot, it's not been effect, been put in effect yet. And aren't we in the process of restriping the lot?
I think we're trying to take off the, these old stripes and then getting to that.
Because remember with the drive-through window, the lane that is now the in-lane will become the out lane and vice versa. So we've just been holding off until that project is done.
Not that this is part of number four, uh, off topic obviously, but is that, that is for public parking, not for any said business, correct?
Correct. I think that's where we ended up. Yep.
Okay, because it sounded like it was.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I guess the only other suggestion we would make is if, you know, it would be like a seven-day-a-week thing, unlike some of the other parkings, but you could put a limit on that from like ten to six in the morning where it's, it's excused for parking because nothing would really go beyond ten o'clock or start prior to six.
A three-hour limit, six AM to ten PM? Which I think is, I think is what you were just saying. Yeah.
Yep. But still waive for special events like a hardorama. We would, we'd make that part of, I think we should.
That sounds great. I, I hear that and I think that's a major pain in the butt every time there's an event over there that may run past that may have, there may be people that aren't looking for liquor license, not looking for noise waivers. I, I honestly.
As part of it?
Thinking about it here, I think the idea of, of, of putting a time period that that limit applies would be a lot simpler than having people come to the council for waivers.
Well, can we include that as part of their submission for their special event, that it just automatically waived? You, you don't want to get to a point where someone's going to get to be a real pain in the rear end and every special event or special event they don't like, they start nitpicking, calling in complaints and hey, that car has been here for three and a half hours. At some point you would have to enforce that.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence. We're doing right by the events that happen at the community house and the people that are attending them.
I, Goochie makes a good point. If, if you can park there for three hours, starting as late as ten PM, that carries you to one AM and, yeah.
Right, but hardorama starts much earlier than that.
Yeah, I one time got in line at.
For so- some people that are attending, some people maybe that are working. It might be they're set up and clean up their, their car could be there much more than three hours. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes.
You could have a car there all day. I just think for some of those bigger events, we should have it automatically included in their special events application and that can come down to the community house and that can just get waived with everything else that comes before us. I think it'll be a clean process.
Yeah, most of those events do have surprise, a liquor license or, or a noise waiver or something. So that probably could be done.
If we can find us, I'm not trying to complicate things, trying to make it easier on the people that run those events, that they don't run into hiccups along the way by doing this. Jason.
Is, is there a reason we wouldn't just do like an eight AM to five PM three-hour parking limit? And after that, it's, you know, and Monday through Friday or I mean, what, or what are, do we have other limited parking restriction areas and what are our rules there?
Hold on, Tom.
Normally during business hours, you would have those restrictions. Normally, during business hours, you would have those restrictions. In this case, the thought was with the splash pad and other things taking place, you didn't want somebody camping out and taking up parking for, like a splash pad that may be open until nine o'clock on a good summer night, when there's other events.
Ri- right now, there are, uh, mu- um, much of this area, uh, two-hour parking restrictions with a timeframe. Might I suggest we simply change it to two to a three and stick with the same timeframe, then all of our past problems kind of fall into place.
I have no problem doing that. I just want to make sure we're protecting the other.
And that timeframe is? Yeah. I thought, I thought that went without saying, but I figured I'd say it. What the heck?
Five PM, Chief Cole Meyer. He's pretty on top of that stuff.
So you could be parked there as early as five PM, and you're fine after eight PM because you're outside the limit.
But I think we should probably include it for a longer period, because you could be down there for a long period of time. Right, so all I'm asking for is pretty much to, when they have special events at the community house, that we waive that with anything else that we need to waive. Simple process. Right, but you could also get someone that would come back at you and say.
For example, at a, an event at the community house, if it's on a Thursday or Friday night, you can park there at three PM and you're golden, or you can even park there at, at three oh-one PM, and you're, you're good for the rest of the night, you're good till the next morning, right?
We're not, we're not really talking that many parking spaces either. I mean, remember, the seventeen-hundred block of Washington, there is no limit. If you want to be an early arrival, you can park there, and that's because it doesn't affect any businesses, you know? That's, was the philosophy at the time. You know, it's overflow parking for City Hall, it's for events, doesn't do any harm. Those, you're not tying up the space in front of somebody's retail business or office, so, I don't know.
Okay, to throw a monkey wrench in things, what about the beer trailer that parks in front of the community house for Harderama? I mean, if they're gonna park in that street, are they gonna get ticketed?
They've always parked there, and they park overnight, and it's just, okay, it happens.
So, I.
Where do they park? For our event planning, usually those are getting specially permitted, so we're not.
And that's all I'm trying to make sure by this, just so you know. I'm trying to get out of here too. Go ahead, darling.
I'm just wondering, um, we have employees that work over at the senior center and over at, um, community house, and I'm wondering, do they have, like, is there enough space in the parking lot by the, um, senior center for all of these people to park? Or are they parking out on West Park Street, which maybe they could find an alternate place so that other people can use those spaces?
They're parking on West Park. It's a matter of convenience, and, uh, we have our ways as a management team of taking care of that if we need, if we need to. On the other hand, it's the middle of February, and there's nothing happening.
True.
Who cares?
Right.
Yeah. As long as they're not violating the law. We generally don't condone that. Yeah.
Okay, we do not have a motion, correct, Jamie? So if somebody wants to make a motion to approve this. What's that? Did? I don't think he did. Jamie says she has no one. Bill, that's the first motion. Second by Jeff, thank you very much. Council discussion.
Is that to approve?
Is it as recommended, or are we gonna have special waivers?
Our time limit.
Our time limit.
It's, nobody's getting ticketed. This is, this is basically a way to control parking, you know, to keep people from parking their cars moving. All the businesses on Washington Street, whether it's businesses, it's to keep good flow of cars, you know, not, so we can't have a one at his car there twenty-four hours a day.
Right, right now, we have no time limit. Is this gonna be all days? Is this gonna be between the hours of business? There, there's nothing on there as the recommendation. They're trying to get a recommendation as part of the motion, is what Greg is asking. So is this gonna be Monday through Friday, Monday through Sunday, ten till six, nine to six, all day, every day? That was the initial, yes. So six AM till ten?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff?
Different situation.
Jeff, you're good with that, six till ten? Okay, other than that, you can just park?
And please do keep it seven days a week, because there are activities seven days a week at the community house, and just like every other business up and down the street, there's gonna be a major business operating there that is gonna rely on weekend business too.
Well, and the park is there too, and people using a splash bar, splash park, splash pad, seven days a week, all the time too, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Jamie, you're up.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, for information only, Greg.
Uh, just reminders of your upcoming meetings. We have a work session next Monday, the twenty-fifth, and, uh, regular meeting, uh, August one. I will be reaching out, uh, Jeff, I said it last meeting, but I'll, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll email the members of the Person on Finance Committee about a meeting sometime in the next two weeks to sort of take a look at our mid-year operating results as of the end of June.
Okay, we do have a closed session tonight. Is there any chance of coming out with any vote?
I.
Aside, aside from adjourning.
I, I think the only, only formal action upon reconvening would be to adjourn.
Okay, very good. So in closed session, we have to review terms for a possible TID sixteen development agreement to assist in multifamily residential development on city-owned former Eggers Industries, downtown property on the East Twin River between Nineteenth and Twentieth Street. We will also discuss matters pertaining to city property to possible sale of city property, and also to discuss possible property purchased by the city. So that will be tonight's closed session. The city council deserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eight-five-one E. When deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Second by Scott. Any council discussion? This is a roll call vote. Jamie.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas. Motion carries.
All right, I'm requesting a five-minute help break.